Who we have on the show is David O. He is the chairman of the board of directors of the Asian American Business Alliance of Greater Philadelphia. It's a five oh one C three organization and David is consultant and business advisor on law, government, politics and community affairs. Previously, David served as Philadelphia councilman at large for eleven years before resigning. He was the Republican candidate for Philadelphia mayor in twenty twenty-three. David is a lawyer of forty years, a former Philadelphia prosecutor, free legal service attorney and managing attorney of his own law firm. I didn't know that. Sir, David served on numerous boards and commissions, including First Commercial Bank of Philadelphia, Community College of Philadelphia, Nazareth Academy High School, Crime Prevention Association, Hahnemann University, Nazareth Hospital, Philadelphia Police Advisory Commission. David served as the first intendant in the United States Army. David is just a dynamic person and friend to the show. So without further ado, how are you, my friend?
I am doing very good. Thank you very much and thanks for the invitation.
Absolutely. It's a great pleasure to have you here. You know, not only are you a friend to the show, I consider you a great friend because you have been very consistent with following some of the stuff that we've been doing in We Talk Weekly, but you have been consistent in really showing up for the community. So I want to thank you for that. And since we were having some dynamic conversation before we get into the quote unquote official interview, I want you to talk a little bit about that creative space because that was a dynamic conversation, not only that we just had, but also some of the advocacy and support you have been given to the community was specifically about the creative and art space. So let's talk a little bit about that.
Yeah. So let me, let me start with this disclaimer. I have no original ideas about this. Listen, and here comes a religious spin. Uh, it is deeply religious, you know, from my perspective and my belief that God has created all people in his image. And there is something special about that idea. And so God is a creator and he has created uh, people in his image and we are creative people. Now, the, the, the real question is, have we found out who we are? And a lot of what I did on city council and a lot of what I, I did prior to that and what I do is, you know, uh, I think very important to help people and the sooner the better, find out who they are, what special gift they have, what is their ability and to move away from all the negativity they hear about their lack of intelligence, their lack of opportunity, their lack of acumen, their lack of talent, all those type of things to say, listen, under all of that, if you really believe that there's something special about you, you have to be persistent and find out what that is. And don't be dissuaded and don't uh, be uh, kind of uh, you know, discouraged about that. And so uh, the creative space is a fantastic area. Um, because not everyone is going to fit within the parameters of society. And some people, you know, uh, their perspectives, their talents, you know, just the way they think, like I could never think that way. I could never imagine that way. And when I hear it, you know, it's, it's amazing, right? And sometimes I hate it. And, and so basically I know that you can disregard and disrespect like things that really represent a person's history, a culture, things like that. And I grew up in Southwest Philly, right? Uh, during the nineteen sixties where there was a lot of discrimination and other things, but it was also time when uh, people were trying to, to, to bring their vote, their voice out. Uh, you know, I went to school in, in, in sixty-five, sixty-six, sixty-seven in Southwest Philly where unbeknownst to me, something was going on. We had African-American teachers teaching black history. And not just black history in America, but starting from Africa. And now I thought every school had this. Why? Because I was a kid, right? But you know, I mean, I think the creative innovative economy, as I called it, um, really presents the opportunity for, for us as people and as a society and as a city in particular, but as a region to, to really appreciate the different perspectives that make us better and appreciate what solutions people have found in other parts of our world or our history that we can really collaborate with, get the best from, say, hey, listen, they tried that before. That was a big mistake. Let's, let's not go down that road, right? So, so that's really a lot of it. And one of the things that I did that you're aware was uh, PHL Live Center Stage. It's a free music platform. Yeah. And, and by the way, I didn't get any money from like a city council or city government. I did get a grant um, from the Creative Arts Economy Department, but most of it I had to raise my own. And um, and we did that for, I think, six or seven years. And when I left council, you know, it kind of ends. But through the Asian American Business Alliance, we're, we're talking about bringing it back. And now jazz, hip hop, classical music, indie rock, you know, country folk, all those types of things, what that, that all has to do with the creative and innovative economy, which really lifts people up.
So let's, let's, so let's park that right there because I want to get more into that because we're going to talk a little bit about that. But you mentioned, so, so I want to back up because you mentioned your time on city council, right? Eleven years, long, healthy, long, healthy career, city council, air quotes, right? Air quotes, let me put that in here, air quotes, right? But uh, you had a long and healthy career on city council, eleven years. Most people can't say that, right? What, when you look back on your time of you serving in the seat, especially as a Republican, right? What was, uh, what does it feel like now? Do you feel that you left a, a, a good legacy? Is it work that you feel that you still could have done? Cause you resigned. It wasn't like you just put out, you resigned. So, so that was on your own way. You did it on your own time, right? And so let's talk a little bit about that, that voyage of you, city council, all the work you have done to you resigning.
Yeah, I, you know, but wanted to be a lawyer. I, I wasn't planning on running for office. It wasn't on my mind. But as I tell people, look, there came a point in time where I, I kind of like hit a brick wall. And I was trying to figure out how to get past this brick wall. And I introspect and I think about, hey, maybe I've done things that I shouldn't have done. Maybe I've ignored things that, you know, were not good. Let me think about it. And I thought about it a lot. And I finally came to the conclusion that uh, I was very self-serving. You know, I wanted to be a lawyer to do good things, but along the way, I was trying to build this fantastic law firm, be wealthy, do good things, uh, live well. And it all, it was all about me. What a fantastic guy I was, what a great firm I had. And I said, you know, I'm building a golden calf to myself and I don't think that's what God wants me to do. And let me think about what I can do. And I heard this ad on the radio about how Riverboat Gambling was going to save Philadelphia and I knew that was false. And I said, somebody should talk about like where jobs come from, how we energize our economy, how people find economic independence so they can have self-determination, not really be under the thumb of people, just be able to be themselves. And of course, that starts with good education, a public school system and all that, you know, public safety and everything. So I ran for office and um, I ran and I lost. I ran and lost and then I ran and I won. And you know, when I won, it was just so unlikely, the entire thing, like I'm not like the ideal candidate. I'm not like the political party's favorite person, all that type of thing. And I had a tremendous opposition. And um, what happened is I really thought, well, I didn't win this um, election. I lost. But God put me here and God put me here for a reason. And as long as I am here, and I don't know how long or short that's going to be, um, I like to do my best. And um, that's what I tried to do. And it didn't make me popular with everybody. And listen, people not completely agree with me either. But one thing, I didn't just uh, kind of vote the way I was supposed to in order to receive funding and to be able to get, you know, opportunities. So I ended up funding my own stuff. I had to raise money. Oh yeah, I went to, people wonder like, why is Coors Light the, the sponsor of PHL Live? What are the only ones who gave us money or Dunkin' Donuts? They give it, yeah, because I didn't have any money. I went overseas. I tried to bring jobs in Philadelphia. I had to pay for that myself, right? There's a lot of problems in that. Um, but after eleven years, that's three terms. I felt that there was no reason for me to go for a fourth term. Uh, specifically, I had done everything I could do. I did the creative economy. I dealt with like, you know, kids being taken out of their homes improperly and subject to physical and sexual abuse. I, I dealt with like a, you know, you know, innovation and, and how to improve our cities. And I dealt with what I felt was mismanagement of funds, not just in the city of Philadelphia, but, but in our, in our agencies and entities and you know, a lot of those issues. Um, but there comes a point where you've done it, you're redoing it, it's rejected, it's not happening. And I just said, look, you know, four years, four years and another four years. Do I want to do yet another four years? And I felt no. Like I think three terms is enough. Um, I think a fourth term would be detrimental. I don't think it would be in the public interest. And quite frankly, I think um, you know, there, there's a temptation that the only reason I would do it again, because it's easy. And then I would just be going for the paycheck, the healthcare, you know, and then there's opportunities where I could have a no-show job, which is common. Yeah. Sorry to say, right? Yeah. You call it no-show. Yeah. It's exactly that. You get a no-show job, you're getting money. They, they, they say we got this council. So, so listen, I, I wasn't going to do that. And I felt like, look, I mean, is there, like, I, I serve at the pleasure of the Lord. And there was no purpose for me to be there anymore than for me. And I said, that's when it's time to go, right? And I'm not saying you shouldn't serve longer than that. Just I'm saying for me, uh, you know, I didn't have a plan for when I left. Well, I had a plan. I was going to run for mayor. And I didn't have a job running for mayor and you know, fundraising is pretty tough and the likelihood of winning is pretty slim, but I want to do it because I, I believe that it's important to run when it's unlikely to win. It's important to get out there when the odds are against you because you're not doing that for yourself. You're doing that because you want to testify about your faith. And, and, and faith is not that you're going to win. Faith is it's the right thing to do. And even if you lose, that's inconsequential, but you got to get there, out there and do it. So, so that's what I did, right? And you know, the, the, the thing of it is that with no plan, you know, uh, people don't want to take the step because it's scary, right? And I'm unemployed. I don't have a job and I don't have healthcare. But for me, uh, that's the time to, like, if you, if you're convicted, if you really believe this, then it's time to go. And by the way, it was okay with my wife too, because I checked with her. I got a wife, I got four kids, you know, so it was a big deal. I was running for mayor and have an income, had to make ends meet, do all this stuff. And um, but I was very happy about it. And um, I feel it was the right thing for me. And I think it was the best thing for this city, that my time was over. Go on to something else and see what God has in store for you.
Yeah. So, so walking through that, the amount of work that you have done through those eleven years, your three terms, there has been an incident that I want you to walk through, if you don't mind, uh, where you were stabbed during your terms. Can you walk us through what actually happened and, and why that is so pivotal for me is I don't want to say that after it happened, you, you acted as if it was okay, but it was, it was big of you to continue and still stay focused on community.
Yeah. So I'll try to, you know, kind of summarize it and maybe add some perspectives. Um, well, I had a long day, was coming home. It was dark. I don't know if it was nine thirty or ten. And we had a delegation from the country of Georgia, near the Ukraine, um, near, near Russia. And uh, they were very um, wonderful, wonderful guests. And I did the international stuff, creative arts economy, all that. And these, they had these young kids and they did a painting and all that. And they gave it to me. Well, you know, they're very proud of their wine, Georgian wine, and they're very proud of their art. So books on art and a painting. So when I came home, I had tons of stuff in the back of my SUV. Uh, my, my bag with my computer in it. I had a couple of bags with the, the, the wine and the, and the painting and the books. And I had my, my jacket over my arm. I was doing all that. So when I pull up, I, 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 I come out my car and I see my neighbor and it looks like he's waving to me. So I want to wave to him. I'm on the driver's side, looking over the car. He's on a porch. But then I realized there's someone walking past me and he's waving to that person, not to me. So the person goes by, I go to the back of my SUV and, and it's a young man, looks perfectly normal, walking by. I wait, I nod at him, say kind of like, hey, how you doing or something like that? He goes about his way. I get all my stuff. My arms are loaded. I could barely, I'm trying to figure out how do I close this, uh, you know, the hatch in the back of the SUV. When I turn around, there he is, like um, closer than you and I are standing now. What's that? Like about four feet, three and a half feet? Except something happened to him, like he was breathing hard. His face was like, I just thought like, is there an emergency? And um, he was trying to say something, couldn't understand what he was saying because he was so like upset and tense and whatnot. And I finally got what he was saying was keys, keys. And then I heard wallet. So, so I'm like, okay, let me step back here, see what's going on. And, and I saw that there was something in his right hand and you could just see a little piece of something. There's a tip of something. Uh, it could have been a, it could have been a knife, could have been a key, could have been a guitar pick. I don't know what it was. It's dark, right?
Right, right.
And as I'm trying to understand what he's saying and trying to assess the situation, trying to take a step back, he takes a, a big step forward, swings his arm up. And, and he's a thin guy, he's quick, hits me right in my left side into ribs. And it's just like that. And, and myself, um, understanding what that is, I, I said to him, you stabbed me, you know? And I wanted to him to know you did in fact hit the target, right? I know what you did. You stabbed me. And it gave me a second to put my stuff down. And uh, I was also, you know, like, I was also talking with him. So he wasn't done. He came lunging in and I, you know, he lunged in, I'd take a couple of steps back. He'd take three steps forward. I'd take three steps back. He'd move to the left. I'd move to the right. He moved to the right. Yeah. So, so we did this for like eight minutes. And during this time, oddly, a car came by and next thing I know, they're behind me saying, do you need help? Do you need help? And I said, yeah, I need help. And they're like, do you need help? And I'm like, yeah, I need help. I'm getting louder, right? And then I realized they weren't talking to me. They were talking to him. Wow. Do you need help to him? And uh, so I was like heading in their direction, you know, trying to avoid him. So I kind of went in the other direction. I'm thinking to myself like I'm bleeding profusely. Um, I got this guy, you know, already stabbed me. I don't know how badly I'm injured. And now I got like four or five guys because they were out the car with their phones out recording. Well, you know, I don't know if they knew what was going on in all honesty, you know, they're, they're like four or five. Like in their twenties, African-American males. He's an African-American male. I'm like, he's an American guy with a shirt in it. So you know, they're like, is this a fistfight? What's going on here? And um, as, as, as we go around a vehicle a couple of times, there comes a point where they just left. And I don't know why they left, but maybe they saw all the blood, maybe the, hey, this is not what we thought it is. Or maybe it is, or maybe what's going, are going on here. But he left too. Like he just, like there just came a point, like after eight minutes of trying to stab me and slash and all that, he just, you know, he kind of went on his way. And uh, you know, and I, I called the police, uh, nine one one, I, emergency, whatever. And I got my stuff up and I went to my front door and I, you know, uh, was trying to get in the house and my daughter, my oldest daughter, who at the time I remember, she was a young little girl, she opened the door, which is not usually what happens, right? And what usually doesn't happen is she gives me a big hug and says, daddy, you're home. Well, I said, go get mom. You know, and I'm thinking like, hey, I'm not sure. Yeah. Cause I want to, you know, call from a landline just to make sure. And then my wife comes down and my little boy and my wife sees me and the first thing she says, she squats on the floor, she goes, ah! And I said, I better go outside and make that call. So that was pretty much like how that whole thing went down. And um, well, I mean, what happened is um, I've grown up in that neighborhood. I, I went to elementary school in that neighborhood. That is a rough neighborhood. And it's funny how Philly is a city where four blocks makes a huge difference. You know, four blocks this way, you're in one kind of neighborhood. Four blocks that way is completely different, but I'm very familiar with my neighborhood. So what happens is, yeah, so I, I'm quite familiar with that kind of thing. It's not the worst thing that happened to me. It's just a thing that happened to me. And the way I look at it is, well, everything turned out fine, you know, the taking them to hospital, they had a lot of doctors and nurses ready for me because they heard I was a councilman. I didn't know it was in the news. And the news, the story was kind of incorrect.
Yeah. That's why I wanted you to kind of go through the full story. Go ahead.
Yeah. The story is like someone stabbed me in the back of my head and I was in a puddle of blood. It wasn't like that, but I was um, in serious, uh, you know, condition. But the truth of the matter is like, once they look at you and the most important thing is the infection. So what happens is he stabbed me with what I believe is from what I saw. Cause I got, I spent eight minutes, nine minutes talking with him. Like calm down. What's the problem? Calm down. And um, like to be honest, and this is what I was thinking. It's kind of funny, but uh, see, I, I separate crimes into categories. And the first category I call transactional.
Okay.
Guy pulls a knife or gun on you and says, give me your wallet. Well, that's a transaction, right? Give me your wallet or I might shoot you or stab you with my knife. If I give you my wallet, well, I got this and I'm not going to do anything. That's a transactional crime. A crime crime is I shoot you first, I go in your pocket, I take your wallet because I don't care, right? And so we started with this transactional conversation, like wallet or keys or whatever. And I really understand what he was saying. Cause like I said, I couldn't really hear him. I was very self-conscious not to be rude.
Right, right.
I was saying like, what? What? See, I thought like, like he went back to his car, his girlfriend was having a heart attack. He came to me like, hey, you need your help. But keys, you gotta get in the car. Well, it wasn't, it wasn't like, uh, you gonna rob me? And you know, um, here's a bunch of things I was thinking, like, it's not my car. It's a city car. Uh, there's nothing valuable in my bag. I don't have any cash, you know, like you're asking for, for me for things. I'm not really in a position to give you or don't have. But once you stab me, that's, it's over, right? And like, the transaction is done. Like, like if you wanted to tell me, hey, man, look, I, I got this knife. Uh, you, you're going to give me something. And I'd be like, okay, listen, I don't have any cash, you know, what could I give you? I got a bottle of wine here. I got some other things, like I'm not really looking for a hard time with you, you know, we don't need to come to, because what does it come to? My life or yours? And um, you know, I was just thinking like, and it won't, I don't know that it'll happen again. That's my point. Like, I was just thinking, what if I? Cause, cause I was thinking about the headlines when he was talking, councilmen maimed and kills homeless youth, right? I was just like, oh, that's, that's not a good testimony. Cause I had just done this whole thing about forgiveness. My cousin had been murdered. The family forgave the murderers back in nineteen fifty-eight. I did a whole street side. And I said, listen, I'm thinking to myself like, that's not a good headline. It's not a good testimony. And it's not like, what if I, instead of stepping forward, what if I just step back and you lose your opportunity? Cause like I said, I had a bottle of wine in his bag. And my first thought is drop the bag, take the wine, smash it in the street and stick it under his face or get in his neck or something, right? That's like a split second thought, like before he hurts you, hurt him badly. Or forget the wine bottle, take a step back, hope the guy doesn't stab you again, but that would be an act of faith. Right? In other words, put your, put your trust in God, not in the bottle or a gun or a knife. And I didn't, I don't have a gun. I used to, I didn't, didn't carry a gun anymore. And I just like, well, why don't I put my faith in God and step back? And the whole thing worked out fine. He's not hurt. I'm not hurt. You know, like, yeah, I was hurt, but I was already hurt. So, you know, I went to the hospital. I was fine. And um, I went to the hospital and it was a big deal. I woke up the next day and I wanted to get out, you know, because the main thing I was thinking about was my, my children. Before they solidify, like in their shock and whatever, I'mma go home and daddy's fine. Not only is fine, you're going to play the piano, you're going to do your homework. Like in other words, I got to boss them around and they will be like, darn dad's home, right? So just to like make everything normal and um, but I was thinking like, how do I get home? And because they were like, you're going to be here two weeks and, you know, so I'm like, okay. Well, I asked, what are all the conditions for me to get out of here? And I just started like, you know, walking. And you know, people like, well, you must not have been that badly hurt. Well, I was, but it was all taken care of, stitched up and everything. The only thing you're going to do at the hospital is rest. And they're going to monitor you to make sure like infection or, you know, but other than that, you're stitched up. There's nothing to do but rest, but I couldn't rest anyway because there was so much news, like the news vans and all that. They blocked the whole, the hospital. And you know, they're not supposed to come up and see me. I had nothing but a steady stream of people coming up today. Everybody knew somebody, detectives, police. Everybody's coming up and saying hello and all that stuff. And for whatever reason, you know, the hospital, they let me out that day, the next day, right? And I don't, I don't take pain medication. Yes, first of all. And um, like first of all, I just think it makes you drowsy. And you know, I, I just think pain is good for you. Like if you've been stabbed, like if you've been stabbed, it's supposed to hurt, right?
You remind me of this comment I seen on YouTube. He said, pain is weakness leaving a body.
So fun. I'm like, this hurts. Yeah. So my thing is like, yeah, it's supposed to hurt. You were stabbed, right? And um, so anyway, they gave me a ride home and there was a news van there and all that stuff. And that's when I realized like how much, like I was shocked, like people in the north, like in, in like Maine and Massachusetts and people, it was news in Korea. And it was like, yeah, people were like, this was news and it's the internet. I didn't realize like a little thing in Philadelphia, just like it spread like wildfire. And um, there was a lot of, a lot of things. And I said, you know, rather than I just stay in my house and heal, as opposed to being in hospital and heal, why don't I just go in an office and just show my face? And you know, everything's fine. And you know, and that's what I did. And the, the news reporter came up and they took a picture and that was that, right? But I just think it was good to just say like, everything's fine. And you know, when I was in the hospital, my staff was calling me, you know, reporters bothering them, you know, and, and they said, uh, you know, uh, they want to know, um, you know, like uh, your thoughts about um, the guy who stabbed you and all that stuff. And I said, well, you know, it's like, um, I forgot what I said, but it was something like, yeah, I have no anim, like, do you have this? I said, no, I don't have any animosity. And they printed it casting me like in a very good light, like the councilman was stabbed and he doesn't have animosity. And I said, well, that's not what I meant. You know what I really meant? I meant like, I don't care. And I felt bad about that, right? I thought to myself, you know what? I should care. Now people say like, well, that's really weird. I, I say, yeah, you know, I understand it's weird, but at the same time, um, what I'm really thinking is, see, this is my neighbor. He lives like fifteen minutes down the road. And we met that night. And um, I should care, right? I should care about who he is, what happened to him, why he's out there and all that. I'm not saying what he did was okay. Don't get me wrong. I did like, I, I believe he needed to be off the street for everyone's good, including his. But you know, but my attitude was really like, hey, man, I stepped in some gum. I wiped it off my foot and I'm fine. Yeah. I don't have any animosity because it's inconsequential to me. Like I could have died. It could have been, yeah, but I didn't. And so I don't really care. And I just thought, well, I'm being cast as this, like, like I said, something really good. But what I really meant was, you know, any animosity? No, I don't really care. And I said, yeah, I don't want to be mistaken. Let me tell people, no, I wasn't saying like I'm kind and forgiving. I was saying like, I don't care. And it's, it was a very negative thing, I thought. And I thought, you know, I should rethink myself. Okay. That um, I should care. And uh, and that's, you know, kind of like what I kind of corrected, like. uh, and that's, you know, kinda like what I kinda corrected. Like, yeah, what I meant was, um, it's insignificant. He's insignificant and I wanna take that back. I wanna rethink that and think, um, he's significant. And while I'm supposed to extend love to him and forgiveness and like, I really didn't care. So honestly, it's not hard to forgive. But it's not really like me forgiving him. It's not really that I love him. I just have to let him know God loves. You know, look, look, God loves me. God loves you. You get right with God. And that's all I really need to convey. And if there's anything I could do to help you find yourself, you know, I will. There is a price you gotta pay. You know, for sure, right? But, but that is the journey that you are on because you were led astray to a point where you're gonna hurt another person. And if we don't deal with that, there's no putting brakes on you. Like you need some brakes put on you and you need to like have an intervention and you need to like, kinda like, that's my opinion. Like I'm not, you know, I'm saying I don't wanna overstep myself here, but that's my opinion, right? As the victim, I think I have something to say about that.
Nah, cause you have a big heart. I'm sure most people would look at vengeance, you know, retribution, you know, uh, uh, you know. And I think that reflecting the way that you are, you found a way to have this uh, uh, balance within yourself to say, you know, this is how I'm dealing with it. This is me.
Let me, let me say that's not originally how I was.
I got you.
Growing up in that neighborhood, I was like every other kid and every other person that lives there today, right? In other words, you step to me, I step to you. Stab me, I stab you ten times.
That's right.
You know, so, so I was always of that mentality and um, it's a learned behavior. You know, it's going to church, reading the Bible. It's reading the letter of forgiveness. It's getting older. You know, I went into the military, I was in a DA's office. I would hurt people quickly, like in other words, and I'm not proud of that or not trying to boast, you know, I'm a bad guy. No, I'm not. I'm just saying like, that was my mentality, right? I wasn't a troublemaker, but yeah, I was like a lot of people, like I understand you're a peaceful guy. If someone steps to you, you take care of it, right? That's how we're raised. That's how we're brought up. That is a learned behavior too. But like looking at and beginning to mature and understand and thinking more deeply and appreciating like things that have been, I've been blessed with the second chance. Like I tell people, listen, he needs a second chance. I, I'm not upset. Look, how many chances have I had? How many times have I been forgiven? How many times has God worked miracles for me? I'm gonna be upset because God gave him a second chance, gave him, no, not at all, right? So, so that comes over time. Once I got elected, I had to start thinking about like my public responsibility. Like, you know, I'm not just a private citizen anymore. And it's a level of pressure, right? That I gotta live up to the position that I've taken. I've got to be aware of like who I am and how I should act. And I don't wanna fall into like being the person who thinks he's important. Cause I'm not, right? I just have this position where you could do really good things for people or you could be really arrogant, self-centered, selfish and think, hey, I'm powerful and I'm gonna take advantage of every power that I got. Like which one are you gonna be? You gotta decide.
I like that level of introspection though, cause I think that's something that a lot of us don't necessarily do. We tend to knee jerk. Without the, the innerness, how can we think a little bit deeper before we react?
Yes. And I think the challenge i- in all of this, whether it's you being an artist or you being a musician or you being a, uh, an educator or a student, you know, is how to be the better you. Like there is me. The me that, that, that I know I am is not a nice guy and, and maybe pretends to be a nice guy. It's a pretty selfish guy. But there's me that I wanna be. And on that night, I chose to be the better me. And I don't know that's all, you know, that, that's the mystery, right? In other words, how do you react? Sometimes you're the worst Charles there is. Sometimes you're like, hey, let me be this Charles. And no matter what happens, you're like, hey, you know what? I did the right thing. I'm really proud of myself. No matter how it worked out. You're like, hey, listen, it worked out. Well, but you know what? Look at who I was. I was this guy that I really respect. And it's amazing, right?
You know what? I'm sure people will look at this and say like, wow, this guy is amazing. And you know, I applaud you for that. And just real quick, because I would be remiss if I didn't ask, did anything ever happen to the guy? Did he, did they find out who it was?
Yeah, sure. And, and here's the dispute, right? Cause he says it wasn't me. And he was found not guilty. And what I've said is this to him and to his father, stepfather. I said, look, we're all presumed innocent. We're all presumed innocent under the law unless and until you're found guilty. And uh, since the jury said you're not guilty, you retain your presumption of innocence. I will ask everyone to treat you as an innocent person. And I leave it at that, you know? And, and I'm, like I said, I'm fine with it. And you know, I'm an attorney and so, and I was a prosecutor. I've done criminal defense. Criminal defense and I'm a, in all humility, a very good criminal defense attorney. Criminal defense is about can the prosecution prove beyond a reasonable doubt to twelve people each and every element of the crime? I don't have to say you're wrong. I just have to say to the jury, are you sure? Sure enough, right? Isn't this weird? Isn't this funny? Doesn't this contradict? Are you really sure? And, and so like as an attorney, have I, you know, willingly and knowingly, uh, gone into court and gotten guilty people free. Sure, sure I have. And, 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 and so the court is a place of last resort. If you can't work out things between, you know, you and somebody, you go to court. And what happens is the court will render a decision. It could be the wrong decision. But without the court, we're left to shotguns and shootings, right? So we both agree, we're gonna go to court and we're gonna let the process go, go ahead. In a civil matter, I may have robbed you blind, defrauded you, but the court found that you're wrong and I'm right. And use, and I agree, we're gonna live with it, right? Even though it's injustice, right? Well, justice ultimately, you know, if you wanna talk about like real justice, it's not coming from the court. It's just an opportunity for justice, an opportunity for us not to kill each other. And to have a process. And that's why the process is so important. The integrity of justice, like the fact that the process could be wrong, but it was done correctly. Everything was, nobody was taking advantage. Nobody was, um, cheated out of ju- like the process, the wrong was done to the letter. And that's, that's what's important, right? And so if you wanna talk about like ultimately real justice, that is a spiritual issue. That is a, that is a matter outside the hands of, uh, man. That is like a godly thing.
Yeah, you're such a, you're such a linear thinker. I mean, geez, I mean, I, I'm, I'm just giving you flowers, cause such a huge heart. So, so as we, so as we move forward, right? And I appreciate you sharing and, and being very transparent about that because you know, we heard so many different stories as, as it relates to what actually happened. You know, uh, where he was even stabbed dead and you know, what happened after that. But I'm glad that you continue to serve a particular community cause someone could have got, you know, uh, uh, cause during that time, I believe it was a very challenging position of Asian hate, you know, as it relates to, you know, different communities butting heads and things. And you could have easily just said, you know what? I'm done and isn't this over, you know? And so I appreciate you not taking a particular stance, you know, and, and in, in being more community based and saying that we're all family and families makes mistakes.
Yeah, well, that's my, um, absolute belief. You know, there, there is a God who has created each person and each person is created in the image of God and we are all one race and we are all one children. And yes, we have differences and different opinions, cultures, tastes, you know, histories. Yeah, that no doubt, right? But at the end of the day, I mean, either we're gonna really look at how we're different or we're gonna look at how we are the same.
That's right. That's right. That's right. Well, thank you for that. Thank you for that. Uh, fast forward now. You continue your, your, your term as city council, then, then you resign. What is your, what do you believe now is your civic responsibility? You know, as it relates to, just you know, you moving forward, your time now in different, uh, scopes of work. What is, what do you believe your civic responsibility is now?
So, so oddly, I'm, I'm, I'm trying to find out. Like, like I think like for those who, you know, I don't know if you thought about this, but look, I mean, I think we're always exploring who we are, wha- what we have to offer. And what's our opportunity to make a contribution, right? How, how do we do that? And like I said, I didn't have a plan. My plan was basically to reflect on like, kinda like what I've done, the opportunity was provided to me and, and what is the opportunity moving ahead? And so I kinda did that and to, to kinda summarize it, uh, what happened is somebody needed counsel. They needed an advisor. And um, I could do the three things that was necessary. Act as general counsel. That means I'm a lawyer who basically understands their business and hires lawyers for them where they need them in Texas, in Rhode Island, in Massachusetts, in New Jersey, in Pennsylvania, in Tennessee and possibly overseas. Because of the nature of their business, they have to have land use. That means like zoning and construction, the development, and there's always gonna be a part where the government's involved. And that's government, right? So understanding government. And then they have other business interests. Like a supermarket or developing, um, a residential facility, things like that. And, and you inevitably run into politics, which is not government, but politics is in and around government everywhere, right? And, and so there's regulations, that's government, but then there's, there's a people who like or don't like each other, the party, their ambitions, you know, kinda like. And you gotta deal with politics. And then there's community, right? So, um, if there is a business and the business is in the community, um, how do people feel about that business? Um, how many people work there? What's the opportunity? What, what is the, is the business a, a positive, um, uh, factor in the community? Like what can it do? How does it do things, right? And so, so those three things I could do and I said, well, you know, you know, I don't think you need a full-time person. And I happen to be in a position where I can do like twenty hours a week. And, and uh, as I explore, you know, kinda like where I think I'm gonna go, what I wanna do. And uh, and so that kind of was good for me, right? So then I had an income doing something I really enjoy doing because of the people. So briefly, I'm gonna tell you about the people. I met this couple, uh, they're from China. And they're just like really salty to the earth, like just good people. And um, it's a husband and wife team. And uh, the husband don't speak English well. The wife speaks better English. Um, and they're not anybody special. They bought a little business in New Jersey, but fast forward eleven years later, they're doing like two hundred million a year. Oh, yeah, right?
The little business, huh?
No, but, but see, here's how I look at it. And, and, and when I say salty to the earth, they're very honest and they're very humble. And, and, and they, they see this as kinda like, like it's a business, but the guy, like he goes to China and he like goes into the mountains and he helps poor people and he builds churches and things like that. And they got war orphans in Myanmar and he's, he's, he's trying to do good things. And he's, uh, he's very Christian. And um, and, and um, well, you know, their business grew so rapidly that there isn't the kind of infrastructure that should be there. You know, so, so I was able to help out. And um, it was just, it was just very interesting because I felt like, look, I said, look, I mean, we're all blessed in the ways we are blessed. You're blessed with a amazing business, fantastic growth, um, and wealth. And you do good things with it, right? I'm not blessed that way. You know, I'm not, right? But I'm blessed in the ways I'm blessed. And I'm very happy about my blessings. And so I'm in a position to help you solidify your business, to make sure all the, the legal issues are taken care of, all the governmental things, to stabilize things that you're unaware of. Um, and to make sure everything is like taken care of. So I'm, I'm here to help you, right? With your blessing and, and, and you know, what I like about them is they're not just trying to make money. Which is nothing wrong with it. And I'm, I'm advocate. Listen, everybody make as much money as you can, right? Don't cheat and steal and lie. Don't do dishonest things. Don't hurt people, but make your money, right? It's a wonderful thing. But um, we're not all gonna be rich and that's, and that's bottom line, right? But there are people who have been blessed with financial ability, right? But they're not trying to get rich. They were doing the right thing and God put that in their, in their, in their household. And I'm not trying to take their money. I'm not trying to be them, uh, but I'm in a position to help them. And I help them manage the blessings that they have received. Yeah. So, so we're a good fit, right? And I'm happy to do it. And uh, and so that was really good for me. Um, so what I do with the rest of the time? Well, I'm studying. Cause there's a bunch of things I don't know. And you know, I tell people, look, you know, there's a lot of things I don't know, cause I just didn't care to know it and I didn't care. Uh, one of them is money, to be honest, right? And people find that kinda like weird, but no, my father was a pastor. He lived through the, uh, grew up, uh, during a Japanese occupation, very brutal. Uh, lived through World War Two, Korean War. I mean, there was a lot of bombings, shootings, you know, all kinds of things, right? So he's a spiritual man. He's a pastor, highly intelligent, you know, all that stuff.
Where you get it from?
Yeah, but, but he, he, he don't like money. And let's say it's a little extreme, right? But he, he's like, money is bad, right? He's, he's poor. He always needed money, but he, he's living the life of faith. In other words, as a pastor from the old school, he's not, he's not, he doesn't have enough. And what little he has, he shares. Because he's living the life of a man of God and a man of God is a man in prayer. Not, uh, trying to store up wealth. Being kind of at the mercy of God, week to week, day to day. And he's got five kids. And we were all taken care of, you know, um, and not cause he had money, right? So kinda like as I'm growing up, uh, you know, my father, mother, they're working for the church or doing all this stuff. And they're, they're living the life of faith, believing they could buy that building, believing they could build this church, believing work a day and night, no vacation. My parents never took a vacation. Um, and I just, you know, I just, um, ki- kinda felt like you do your work and you get a paycheck, big or small, you know, it's just kinda appropriate, whatever. But if you're taken care of, you're taken care of. And I never really kind of like, listen, do I wanna be rich? Yeah, I wanna be rich. And as I said before, I was building this law firm. I wanted to have the big house with the swimming pool and the sports cars and all that stuff. Be a good man and rich too, right? You know, who doesn't wanna do that? Things and have all the wealth and enjoyment of, you know, but I said, listen, I'm going in the wrong direction because this is all about me. And, and so, you know, I, I concluded my time in council. And before I took my next step, I said, you know, something I don't know about, which is very important. And, and what I try to help people with is um, their job and their opportunity and being the best them and being financially um, secure. So, so they can have independent thought and be their own person, you know? Like if you have a job you love, fantastic. If you have a job you don't love, but it's taking care of everything, fantastic. But if you are not a person who's able to fit in these things and you've got something to offer, you know, then, then where do we, where's the opportunity? How do we bring that out? What if you're amazing? You know, p- pianist or a great guitar player, you know? What if your real gifts are in things that are just outside the box? What if you could never get a violin or a piano or a piano lesson, right? Well, you will never be what you are really gifted to be.
That's true.
And that's the challenge, right? Cause of our public school system. And that's the challenge, right? Cuz of our public school system. Trying to provide all that for the kids, a safe environment, trying to, you know, get them focused on the, the positive and good things. So I was just thinking like, you know, well, you know, I talk a lot about people, you know, should have a, a good job, and we need to bring more jobs and but I don't really know anything about money. I, I know what money is, I'm an attorney, I advise business people. But to me, the discussion about money is not a discussion about labor. Like, in other words, if I'm cleaning the street for seven dollars an hour, or I'm a lawyer for like eight hundred dollars an hour, it's still labor.
Yeah.
But money makes money. Well, that's easy if you got a hundred million dollars, right? But what if you don't have any money? How does money make money? How do you get money to make money? How do you start with nothing and end up, you know, like, well off enough or even wealthy, right? So I said, you know, I, I should really kinda look into this. And that's what I decided to study. Because I said, you know what, I'm arrogant in my kind of like dislike of money. I'm like self-righteous, um, very prideful, uh, and, and all around me are people telling me and everybody else, here's how you make money. And I just uh discount them. And you have to be careful, obviously, with people that get rich quick and all that. But let me kinda investigate myself, you know, what it is, so that I can, you know, kinda like advise people better. So anyway, that, that's what I was doing in my spare time, and and uh also, I had a group of business people say to me, we really like your ideas, and we like what you're trying to do with this uh business organization, and we'd like you to do it.
So, so, so let's, cuz I wanna get ready to get in there, cuz I, I believe we're, we're going to, cuz I wanna really peel back the layers on that, because you're doing some amazing work over there. Uh, but before we get into that, you mentioned a few things like, um, just even education and, and in the streets, you know, cleaning up the streets, sanitation, which brings me to your, your, your past race when you were running for mayor, right? You ran against uh
Cheryl Parker.
Cheryl Parker, our current mayor, Cheryl Parker. Uh, what, what, what? When you think of the race that you ran against that, against her, um, I want you to walk us through that feeling of now leaving city council, now throwing your hat in for the race for mayor, and then what you believe was the weakness of particularly, I, I don't wanna say the weakness of your campaign, cuz I, I believe you ran a decent campaign.
Weakness, there's weaknesses in everything, yeah, sure.
Okay, I mean, that's cool, that's, that's fair. Uh, but what, what do you believe, how, so, so we have a mayor now. What do you believe uh are her strong points, and where do you believe is her weaknesses right now, and do you believe she's doing a good job at this point?
Well, that's um, that's kinda challenging for me. I mean, first of all, uh, she's the mayor.
Right.
And so, there's nothing, like, there's no, there's no alternative, right? She is the mayor. And I try to be supportive as much as I can, because, and, and listen, she don't need my help. She's the mayor. We only have one mayor, and we should all hope our mayor does well.
That's right.
And um, and, and I was never against her or anyone else. I'm just for what I think is best for the city. And I bring a alternative point of view. And I have been that alternative point of view, you know, in city council. But campaigning is different. What happens is campaigns are about what somebody's gonna do.
Right.
Not what they did, but you could look at what they did or what they said, but people, people can change that. Like, I run on my record and on my ideas, and I have said a bunch of things, I have done a bunch of things, and I run on those ideas very consistently. Uh, and so what we have is a democratic city that's a seven to one, to one, right? Seven Democrats to one Independent to one Republican.
Wow.
And it was a time after
I didn't know that, actually.
Oh, oh, yeah, oh, yeah, yeah. So, so what happened was a time after, you know, two terms of Mayor Jim, James Kenny. And there was this issue, are we gonna end up with um a, a, a city that is much more progressive? Like, than Jim Kenny? And, you know, there were a number of candidates, and who was gonna win is really up, up in the air in the Democratic primary. I being a Republican, you know, I'm not in the Democratic primary, and so there's no excitement in my race, right? You have to wait until you figure out who the winner of the, and, and it wasn't, people are not sure who's gonna win, you know, there was uh Jeff Brown, you know, Jeff Brown. You know, he had a lot of support, there was Helen Gim, she's probably the most progressive, you know, kinda to the left Democrat.
Reinhardt.
Reinhardt was the city controller, respected, and you know, you know, and then there was Cheryl, I mean Cheryl Parker, she's like, you know, from the uh, the, the Ninth Councilmatic District, former legislator, you know, all that stuff. So it was a pretty exciting field, and Alan Dom, the businessman, remember?
Forgot about that.
Yeah, 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 so.
The, the, the judge was in there, I forgot his name. Delian.
Delian, yeah. And, and so it was a, it was like a, a full house, a type of thing. And like, it was uh kind of like nobody knew how it was gonna go.
Yeah.
But when Cheryl Parker won, she won pretty decisively. Yeah, when people, the, the, the voting was done, uh, she was ahead significantly, right? And, and, and so she was a winner, but the thing about uh her race was she moved to the center. Whereas the other candidates were kinda more out to the left, remember? And
That's right.
There was vilification of Alan Dom, and particularly Jeff Brown.
Yeah.
And, you know, kinda we got into this as we always do, race and gender, cuz there's a lot about identity, right? And I'm not saying identity's bad, I'm not saying that, but like, if, if you're gonna say like it's time for a black woman, well, that's not room for Jeff. Not women, all right? Well, you have women, you have Helen Gim, Asian woman, you have, you know, Rekka Reinhardt, you know, white woman, Cheryl uh Parker, black woman, who else? But anyway, what happens, oh, Marie Kenyon Sanchez. First Latina, right? And, and previously
She dropped out pretty early, though, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, so she was kinda like the progressive Democrat before progressive turned to like even further, to more socialist kind of like type of thing, right? And so by the time Helen Gim comes along, she's like the new definition of progressive, but Maria had for a long time been like
She was, yeah.
Innovative, yeah, kinda policy wonk type person. You know, independent voice and all that, right? So it's a very interesting race of different characters. And so when the race is over, it's Cheryl Parker, and it's historic, right? In other words, we have our first woman mayor, who's also our first black woman mayor, right? It's very historic.
And hundredth, it was the hundredth.
The hundredth mayor, and, you know, a lot of people said, this is the time, right? And so, you know, races often come down to like what people think in a nutshell. Like, the first woman mayor, who's also a black uh woman, who's also the hundredth mayor, and, you know, that's kinda it, right? And her views and my views on the campaign trail
Similar.
Were pretty similar, right?
Now that I'm thinking, you're absolutely right, that's why I finished it. It was pretty similar, yeah, that's right, that's right.
Previous to the race, they were not similar.
She was more le, like, to the left.
And popular, right? In other words, I was for policing Kensington.
Yes, yes.
And she was not, but then the campaign, she completely
That's right.
I was not for defund the police when it was very popular, and she was, and by the time of the campaign, she said
Terry stops.
So, so weird thing was, right, right? So she, she did a thing about like, um, you know, uh, stop and frisk as it is used, is illegal in the constitution, I agree with her. But in the campaign trail, she says, I'm gonna use Terry stops, and I was like, no, that's improper, right? Yeah, it's kinda weird, right? Like, how the whole thing worked out. And, and, and listen, to be clear, campaigns are not about what I did, it's what I'm gonna do. You could look at what someone did, but someone could say, listen, that's what I said then, I thought was right then, but I'm changing. And remember, I was doing this whole drone, drone thing.
Yeah.
Like, how we're gonna police crime, how we're gonna make it, and it was like, oh, that's a, that's a ridiculous using drones. I'm saying, no, it's not ridiculous. So using technology in many ways to deliver better services, because, you know, the issue for me was, um, you know, public safety, making people like the stress that people undergo, living in a community where you can't step outside, your kids can't play, and people getting shot, like, that leads to more violence. Violence leads to violence type of thing, right? Anyway, so uh, and there was a lot of reforms I would do, and that made me like, uh, not popular to many people, and popular to a lot of people, right? But it's also who votes. Like, for me, I would have reformed the Child Protective Services, DHS, I would have reformed a public school system, I would do things very differently. And it's a big, like, could you do it? And I said, yeah, I could do it, and I would do it. And um, I think it still needs to be done. So I like, you know, like her positions, and I like, um, you know, what she tries to do. Uh, do I think everything's going well? No, I, I, I think um one of the things is that our city has too much waste. Now, people are like, what are you talking about waste? Everybody wants to fund everything, right? Uh, you got a free bus rides, free this, you gotta give out all this money. Well, then what happens is you don't have money for your street cleaners, and your trash collectors, and your sanitation workers, and okay, cuz you spent all that money. And then you don't have any money for SEPTA, cuz you were giving it away, and you were putting the homeless down there, and you were having uh uh drug addicts come in, and you're trying to house people, and people are getting shot, and you're trying to defund your SEPTA police. Like, to me, that's just like, everybody's okay with spending money until you run out of it for the things you need. Like, you have to get that money and put it in a classroom. You have to, you know, uh, uh, fund community college, you have to do all these things. And uh, I always said in council, look, everybody wants to be Santa Claus, I just wanna be an elf. Like, you know what I mean? Like, everybody wants to give things away. And I just wanna build the little toys that you give away. Like, we don't have enough elves, we have too many Santa Claws. Cuz it's great to be Santa Claus, I gave away this, gave away that, fantastic, Santa Claus is here. But who's gonna be the elf? Who's gonna stay in the shop and, and use the hammer and nails and make all the stuff? So I'm your elf councilman.
So what was your, so, so I'm sure you were aware of this whole strike in the sanitation and DC thirty, so what was your position on it?
My position is the same consistently. These workers are underpaid, grossly underpaid. And for the most part, look, I mean, if you're a municipal worker, you're working for the city government, you should not be struggling to feed your children. Um, the worst jobs in our city are done by these people. You know, we have city workers who have to go down into our sewer system, and there's a grate where all the water, you know, and it's blocked by dead rats. And they have to go in and breathe the air, they have to put down the hazmat suits, that's disgusting work. And we don't pay them a living wage, and I'm just saying, look, you're paying, our city pays for all kinds of BS, and I, I would curse on your show, and, and people love it, oh, you're paying for, yeah, you're giving away the public money, but then you're not taking care of the human beings that are doing the work. They are, they are the city's workers. You are, as a public official, responsible for them. Treat them well, pay them well, take care of their health, and they will take care of their children.
That's right.
And, and, and if you do that, you put that first before all the glitz and other stuff you do that make people happy, giving them, like, giving out stuff you're not supposed to give out. And you can't sustain it, giving away free community college. How long is that? It's not gonna last. To me, it's all a gimmick. And then one of the biggest things you gotta do is the public schools. And not just putting more money in it, like, people say, fund SEPTA, well, aren't you gonna reform it? Aren't you gonna fix it? You just wanna fund it. Why do you always wanna fund a broken? Don't fund failure, fix it.
That's right.
But it's always like, oh, it's broken, it's wasting money, it's mismanaged, and a lot of it is because of the political appointments. Why do incompetent, unqualified people get these appointments? They get these big salaries, they ruin everything, and everybody says what a great job they're doing, because they're supposed to say they're doing a great job because the power people put them in there. They're not competent. And this whole city's okay with it, like, everybody knows. No experience, no knowledge, no educational, uh, but our favorite person in politics put them in that position. Well, the thing's going really poorly. And then the people who want something that were okay with all of this say, look, oh, there's no money for us now. Yeah, there's no money for you, you didn't think that was gonna happen? Like, there needs to be some fiscal responsibility controls. So I hope our mayor will do that.
Okay, so Asian American Business Alliance of Greater Philadelphia, the twenty twenty-five Golden Eagle Awards Dinner. So let's talk a little bit about that, and what that is and some of the work that you're doing as being chairman of the board.
Right, so we formed a business organization that is focused on Asian Americans, and, and let me just define, I think we talked about this before, it's a pretty big category. You could go from like the Middle East through Asia Minor, over to like China, Mongolian, Central Asia, uh, over to India, South Asia, Southeast Asia, East Asia, Pacific Islands, Indonesia, you got a huge group of people, but in America, they make up like, you know, like seven percent. So in this small group of people, is this tremendous diversity of regions, languages, religions, perspectives, governments that they came from, all kinda things, but they're not really, I could say, like, one group of people, but um, and, and they're very, very diverse and different, but in America, because there's so few, you lump them in a one, one barrel. And so the issue is not how can this group be better than others? The issue is how can this group perform to its potential? If it's only like seven percent, and so when you break it down to Cambodia and Vietnam, it's even smaller, right? And so while there is focus, and there needs to be focus on other groups, how, how do you deal with a group that is so not similar? Like, you know, when you deal with Latinos, for example, the one thing, they all speak Spanish, they could be from Puerto Rico, Mexico, Guatemala, Honduras, but they're speaking Spanish. And they have some Spanish culture in there, which is like a part of like a glue that holds them together. Uh, and, and so here you have like Muslims, Baptists, Christians, Catholics, Hindus, you know, Buddhists, you have all kinda people. So it's a kind of a difficult to bring them all together. And why would we bring them together? Because they're lacking. And um, if we could improve their performance, it would be a benefit to the entire region. And so it's not that we're trying to improve their performance so they can live better than anybody else in a vacuum, it is so that they can contribute to the whole in a way that benefits everybody. So, for example, if we look at the people of our region as our body, we have a strong right hand, a strong right arm, we have strong legs, but we have a weak left hand. And because of that, you can't lift to the benefit of the whole body. And that weak left hand is the Asian American community. So people say, like, a very successful group of people, not really, and that's another false thing. Yes, there are different ways of looking at, but yeah, I can make a generalization, I could say, you know, men are the most successful group in America. And therefore you, a black man, from like North Philly, yours, well, that's not true, right? So you have to break it down, you gotta break it down, West Philly. So, you know, so the thing is, you break it down. And, and so you break down to who you can connect with, because there are other people connecting with other people.
Nothing wrong with it.
Yeah, who's connecting with this group? So people say, well, they're very successful, well, that's not true. So what happens is they're not successful a, as they should be.
Okay.
But to this, to the extent they have a level of success, it comes out of the fact they don't have other opportunities. So they're going to do this thing, right? And then, how do they contribute? If they're not successful, how do they contribute? Do they contribute? And how do we get more contribution? Because if they create more jobs, if those jobs are, are hiring people throughout our city, whether it be white, black, Latino, Asian, whatever, is better, right? And so to reach that potential, and then what is the point? So why are we a five oh one C three? Cuz we're not a business organization for money's sake, we're a business organization to benefit the public. And so, our thing is really this. What is it that um, this community has been able to do? And that's where we run in this issue, like, well, you guys have this secret formula, and I said, okay, well, Formula. And I said, okay, well. We should make it public. We should go out and share, like, this is what we did. And it's not really a secret, nor is it that amazing. But it is a mystery, right? So let's come out and talk about it. Let's talk about how people can go from like having five hundred dollars in the bank. To making two hundred thousand a year in their own business, or a million, or two million, or five million. What are the ways? And are they ways that are so difficult nobody else can do it? Or or are they ways that you can do and I can do? Not that we're gonna do it, but we could do it. And maybe there's a match there, right? So that's what this organization is about. And and because of five oh one C three, it must deal with civil rights. It must build bridges. And how do you build bridges as a business organization? You help people start businesses. You help people, you know, understand how to to how to uh take advantage of financial opportunities. And one of the things that we'd love to do is. Take the businesses that we have. And pass them on.
Hmm.
In the community. So let me explain a little bit about that. See, someone can't cu- cu- comes over from another country, they can't get a job someplace. They may be highly educated in their native country, but not, they can't, for example, they're a doctor in. Korea.
Right.
But you can't practice medicine here. You you could be a engineer in India, maybe could be engineering here, or maybe you're gonna drive a taxi cab, whatever it is, right? And so. By necessity, they start a business. And the business fails, they start another business grows. What they don't do, for the most part, which is different than a lot of the immigrant pattern, or even. Like, uh, let's say, um. What a lot of uh native born Americans will do. You start a business, it grows, your children work the business, it grows, that type of thing, right?
Yeah, yeah.
They're 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 different in this sense. They start a business. And they have no intention of their kids coming back to it. They're sending their kids to college. And their kids are gonna be a doctor or a lawyer or an architect or engineer or scientist, and they're not coming back. To the business, which I'm not saying is a good idea because maybe it's a mistake because. The people who started a business and it grew and it grew and it grew have done fantabulously well. But a lot of the Asian immigrants. Because the country, basically, our country, did not allow Asians immigrant to this immigrate to this country till till like uh after nineteen sixty five. And really, it took place in sixty eight. It was the, like, all the exclusion acts. So what happens is. They're coming in after like nineteen seventy for the most part. And and so when I get here, they start a business, you know, and their whole point is send my kids. To college, to graduate school, to become an American, to become a professional, to to have respect. And to become like a. Not someone who works in my little business or my shop or something like that.
True.
So let's say they started when they were like thirty two years old. And now they're sixty five. Well, their kids are not coming back. They're perfectly fine in Los Angeles or New York or something like that. The only reason they're still at that business is cuz that's what they do. They don't need the business. That's what they do for a living. So the business goes from nothing to. Uh, making money to declining as they get older, they don't need the business, kid's not coming back.
Yeah.
It will eventually close. No one's gonna buy it. Why don't we pass it on to someone in the neighborhood?
Hmm.
Why don't we take someone like an apprenticeship program? Who wants to be entrepreneurial but doesn't know how to do it? Because there's been a break in the entrepreneurial stream.
Yeah.
Particularly in the African American community, some some poor white communities, you know, Latino community. Asian, why don't we particularly many of these businesses, when we're talking about building bridges with communities? Providing opportunities to be an entrepreneur. So so why? Because you you find people who want to do it, have the discipline, have the mindset, has a perseverance. They learn the details. Here's the delivery guy. Here's where it comes from. Here's the bills. Here's the cost. Here's how you save money here.
Such a great idea.
Right?
Such a great idea. Yeah, you know, one would argue that. Spe- especially those mama pop businesses that started specifically in African American community. A lot of those businesses were. Pretty much pushed out because of big box stores. Right? That's that's an argument uh that I have heard and and seen, you know, you don't see. The 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 corner store, hardware store like we used to see back in the day, you know, or or even the. Well, well, I do see a lot of cleaners out there, um, some teller and cleaners, but it was a lot of. Blackface tellers and cleaners that used to be in 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 the neighborhoods. But I think what yours, to your point, though, I think what you're. What you're saying, that idea is 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 uh an amazing idea because you don't have to, if. You had a store that was doing pretty good. Uh, that now is on a decline because.
Age.
The age, yeah, it's just aging out, you know, and it's no one else there from the family that's willing to. Take it because they're doing their own things now, you know, then there's someone that particularly may be in a community that love that store that would wanna take the reins. That's a, that's a great idea. I don't know why that isn't happening right now.
So the person, let's say, the elderly couple who's got that store. That's too much for them. That's not on their mind.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
But we, as a business organization, nonprofit, we can come in and facilitate that and help that process. So what they're not gonna do, cuz they don't have the time or the interest, like, they wanna do good, but you know, it's a lot.
Yeah.
Interview people, create a program, see who's the right fit, bring them in, mentor them.
It's a type of vetting process, yeah.
So so you mentor them for success.
Hmm.
And and the other misunderstanding people have, like, well, they'll never do that. Of course they will. Of course they will. Listen. They got great years out of that business. Their kids are fine. And they're knocking on heaven's door. They're they're like, they're like sixty seven, seventy. And they wanna do good. And that story ain't doing nothing for them.
Yeah.
You know, they they would love to. Find like a wonderful person in community. Middle aged, senior, young person. Mentor them into the business and then move along.
Do you find people that? I mean, obviously, you're already in a work of this, but.
Sure.
Are ha- have you found any interest in that in terms of proprietor saying like, yeah, sure.
Yeah, oh, really? Yeah, yeah, that's why, listen, that's why I have the idea, right? In other words.
Wow.
See, see, there's something that you have, right?
Yeah.
Let's say you have something. And you just don't need anymore. You have a violin. You got two violins, you got three violins, you got a the the hundred thousand dollar violin. Well, you got this violin, it's like two hundred dollars. You don't need it. And then there's some guy, he could be completely different race, religion. There's some little boy or girl. And you could give them the violin and you would wanna do it, wouldn't you?
That's right, that's right.
Well, you would and I would and, you know, in other words, it's not, it's not like you're giving up your hundred thousand dollar violin. You can't earn a living anymore.
Yeah.
You know, am I, is that too cheap? Anyway, the point is, a million dollar violin. Anyway, my point is like, so it's not like an amazing thing.
Right.
It's a very normal thing. You know, you have three footballs. You just got an NFL football. Your kids don't even play with this football. The kid down the street says, I I'd love to have a football and I can't afford one. You're like, I got an extra one.
Wow.
There you are, right? That's very normal for people to do that.
Yeah.
And 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 we feel good about it. Like, hey, that football's doing good, you know?
Right.
And. And for a lot of people. Um, especially getting older, they're thinking about the afterlife. They're thinking about, you know, what are the good things I've done? And. You could always.
They want the blessings before they transition.
Sure. And 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 they're not bargaining. Basically, what happens is, look, you could always do good for your own.
That's right, that's right.
But when you do good for others and for strangers and people who are not your own, that that's really giving, right? That's as, of course, I'm gonna give to my kids. That's normal. When I give to somebody else's kids or some kid who don't have anybody. That's. You know, like a hundred times more meaningful. And you're saying like, what? Will this produce?
That's right, that's right. I love that. Let's bargain, let's bargain. Let's get, let's get into the pearly gates, right? All right, so as we're talking about some good things, some good things that's happening, the Asian American Business Alliance of Greater Philadelphia, the twenty twenty five Golden Eagle Awards Dinner. This looks like an amazing thing. I wanna jump right into, uh, let me, let me pull this up cuz I I I need, I want people to see some of these big names that's in here from. Uh, the Hanwha.
Hanwha Philly Shipyard.
Yard.
Now, yeah, let me, let me say what that is, right? We have a shipyard. It was Accor Shipyard, along comes Hanwha, which is a big Korean company. They purchase it and now. The impact can be substantial in this sense. They have like seventeen hundred workers there. They're getting, they just got a new ship in. They go from seventeen hundred workers to four thousand workers. They get more ships in, they could go to eight thousand, twelve thousand people, the good paying jobs. You don't need, you know, you don't need like a a a. Any specific college degree. You have to have skills. They will train you. Why? Cuz shipbuilding has left this country. They gotta retrain everybody.
Wherever is, this isn't down, down south Philly, is it?
Really, the shipyard, right there.
Right there.
Every time you go over to bridge to like uh the airport, you'll see the big. You know, the big crane or whatever, the big lift, you know? So so, yeah, I mean, and so those are good paying jobs, right? And you you're gonna have that.
I don't think people even knew that.
Yeah, so so it's one of the things where. If we could. Grow that shipyard.
Hmm.
Um. We would have a lot of good quality, high paying jobs for for working people with technical skills. With healthcare, you'd be a union member.
Hold on, wait, wait, wait. So they're currently hiring is what you're saying?
It's in the process, right? They just, they just got a new LNG uh ship that's gonna be built. And so the the president of Korea is gonna visit there and and uh, you know, the US right now.
Okay.
You know, is really trying to re- rebuild. US shipbuilding, but. They have to do it through other countries cuz we have not been building ships for a while here.
Of course, yeah.
So what's gonna happen? You're gonna take a company like Hanwha Shipbuilding, right? They're gonna come here, they're gonna start building ships, they're gonna hire the US workforce. That US workforce, they haven't been built, so you gotta train them. Now you're training a whole new generation.
Yeah, yeah.
And why not the folks in our city and.
I love that. I love creating jobs.
Creating jobs, good jobs, right?
Wow. So so you have the CEO David Kim.
Yep.
Uh, you have Mo Rusby, President Building Industries Association.
Yeah, so Mo Rushdie, Mohammed Rushdie.
Okay.
Uh, he is kind of the leading figure in affordable housing in Philadelphia. Mayor Parker's ambitious thirty thousand homes, eight hundred million dollars. So he's like the key person in that because he's a developer. He's got two companies that I'm aware he's associated with. One is the River Ward's Group here in Philadelphia. The other one is called Maven.
Okay.
And they're building like uh home residential units out on the on the Red Sea in the Middle East. And so like he has got a formula where if you want to get into development. You can talk with them. They will help you get city land for free or very low cost. They got a template, how you could build those homes. You know, they'll support you, getting credit. And you're not gonna have a problem with the building trades unions, they're gonna be on board. When you build the houses, you're not gonna make like a fortune. You're gonna make like twenty seven thousand on each house. So let's say you do five houses.
Right.
You know, but you're gonna make money. But here's the thing. Now you're a developer. Right? Where will you get this opportunity?
Wow.
So so that's why we are, you know, awarding him his impact in the city, his impact on affordable housing. Uh, his impact on like innovative thinking and dealing with uh, so so what's one of the big problems in our city? Look, those assessments, which I'm a hundred percent against.
Yeah.
Are are, to me, they're improper and they're too high.
Yeah.
And that's why you're pushing people out of house and home in this city, especially people in certain neighborhoods, right? Cuz I, cuz I, cuz. Some properties are not being assessed higher and some properties are like being assessed double and triple.
Yeah.
And now that means your taxes go up, which you can't pay, right?
That's right.
And so so trying to bring the cost of living down, trying to find homes that are affordable for people who need a place to stay. You know, while everybody's building luxury homes. So so this is a real challenge, right? So so that's why he's being, receiving an award.
Tim Haas, founder, THA consultant.
Yeah, so Tim Haas Associates, that's what he found is it's top notch engineering and architect firm. He died. Um, and and so posthumously, we're recognizing him for his contributions, but just an amazing person. I'll tell you a quick story about him. Uh, so he is. A person who founded his company that became one of the most, you kind of like um, highly respected parking lot.
Hmm.
Um, uh, design companies.
Interesting.
So you take the idea of parking and then you you take an unsexy topic, but but where do you put the cars? And how how do you integrate parking into? Structures for entertainment, shopping, living, you know, and so that's what he did, but um, he's also a pastor. And so what happened? He has a church and a business and and they're combined. Uh, the story about him, and I'll try to make it short. It's kind of a long story, but I'll try to make it short. He got uh hired a engineering company, um, and. He was very successful there, so they made him basically a shareholder partner at a very young age, but he wanted to have his own. Business, so he left there. Starting in his garage and. He had a heart problem. So he he goes into the hospital and he's dying. And. Lo and behold, they came up with a heart. And so. You know, he's saved, right? They they got heart, heart transplant.
Wow.
Well, the day before, he's supposed to get this operation. A woman is brought in. And then the doctor comes to him and says, if this woman doesn't get a heart, she's gonna die. There's only one heart, right? It's his heart. And he's saying, well, what if I don't get the heart? He says, well, then you're gonna die. And he said, give her the heart. Right? So so the woman lived cuz he gave up his heart. Now he died, technically he died, but before he was completely dead. A heart came in and he got the transplant and he lived, right?
What?
Yeah, so here's here, so that's the beginning of the story.
Geez.
So what happens is, he's now got this business, is successful, all that stuff. And then he has a heart problem. He's back in the hospital. And here's how it goes. You get one heart.
Yeah.
You don't get two, you get one. And so his chance of getting another heart is done, right? He's dying, still relatively young, very successful business. Well, the heart surgeon comes in and is the same doctor who came to see him about the woman, right? And here's what he said. He says, you only get one heart, but. We had a healthy heart for you and you gave it away. And we, the next heart was unhealthy, and that's the heart you got. And we have a healthy heart for you.
Unbelievable.
So he got that second heart, right? So so here's his life story as why he's a deeply religious and giving person and, you know, just like incredible. Just human being, right? So so a business person who has high standards, who does such charitable things. And it it's really s- a sad thing that people vilify business people cuz they're just people. They just happen to do a business and like, you know, the the my clients, wonderful people. Who would have guessed? You bought a business, little business, next thing you know, two hundred million a year, right? And growing. Sometimes God blesses you with long life, good health, wonderful children, amazing talents, and sometimes he blesses you with money and success, right?
Yeah.
You know, and I I say, don't be envious of other people's blessings. Be be joyous for them. And 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 recognize that you have equal blessings, but in different, in a different way. And it is, uh, could I put it this way? It is the devil. That makes you jealous. Because it makes you say, if only I had that.
Yep.
And here's what.
What I have isn't good enough, I need yours.
You're not developing or even appreciating what you got.
Agree with that, a hundred percent.
So you are misled and you are, you know, you know, kind of like a fool. So anyway, amazing story from him and then Ocean Kingdom is my, is that person I was telling you about, that couple. You know, uh, you know, the doing all these good things, running an honest business, you know, it's seafood.
Right.
Frozen, moving, you know, like fantastic. So these are just wonderful people. Um, Mohammed Rushdie is Egyptian American. Uh, and uh, you know, so these are, these are like just great businesses, great models. So we are honoring not just success in business.
Right.
But successful human beings.
Amazing.
Who do great things with their business or. A business that is gonna have a great impact. So positive, look, look at the taxes from Hanwha. A business that is gonna have a great impact, so positive. Look, look at the taxes from Hanwha. You know, that's gonna pay for schools and transportation, cleaning up our city, the jobs, people feeding their kids. People coming back to life cuz they now have a job that pays them well, even though, you know, they may have had other problems in their life.
Unbelievable. Unbe- this is, this is amazing. So let's talk about the, so the event is, you said it's a it's a dinner. And it's uh Friday, October third, twenty twenty five. Um so we got some time for people to see. Love Casino Hotel, Packer Avenue, not too far, right down this block, right down the street, pretty much.
Yeah, for those who don't know, um there's free parking, but. There's a ballroom on the second floor, so you're not, you're not going, you're not going to the casino part. You're going to the ballroom for the dinner and the stage. And um, you know, what happens is kids can come because it's a separate entrance. You're not, you're not going to casino. But it has a big space for like five hundred people. Now, this is a business event. Let me just say that clear. And so it's a hundred fifty dollars a ticket. And um, but I would say this, look. It's the business opportunity. Business is struggling. People are looking for where can I sell my stuff, what, who can hire me? Where can I get work from as a professional, as a service provider, as an innovator, whatever? And well, you gotta meet the people, right? So here's a company like Hanwha Philly Shipyard. They're new. They're coming in. They're gonna have a population. They need food, they need supplies, they need. You you're gonna, you gotta meet them. And then you gotta break bread with them. You gotta like, you know, how how do we get into this process, right? So we're gonna as a business organization, try to help that, facilitate that. You wanna, you wanna have Mo Rushdie come out and talk to your group about. I don't, not saying he could be everywhere, but yeah, he wants people out there to, you know, how are you gonna build all these houses? They're not gonna have one company do it. They're gonna look for many people to be part of. The development of affordable housing in in our city and and and, you know, so so forth and so on, right? There's many other, but you, but the the problem is people say, look, I got this service, I got these goods, I got. But who do I sell to? I need more clients. You you gotta come into these spaces. And you're saying, well, listen, I I I'm I'm uh. I'm I'm uh, you know, from South Philly. I'm from New Jersey. I I'm African American. I I I'm Puerto Rican. Why do I go to Asian American Business thing? Cuz business is business. Because we're not trying to say like, nobody's welcome unless you're Asian. We're trying, everybody's welcome. To 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 find a new resource that has not been organized. We're organizing. To be a blessing to everybody, right? In other words. We have received blessings, all of us. We have received blessings. I went to a public school where all my teachers are black. Uh you know, everyone who taught me was black. Did I not receive a blessing? I sure did, right? And we can give blessings, you know, give a opportunity, get a good service, hire a good worker. They kick in their family, you know, I mean, it's all good things.
Wow, great, great, great. This is gonna be a great event. So are there any, so are everyone speaking that's up there or do you have a keynote speaker?
So here's how it works. That's a lot of people, right?
Yes, a lot of people.
So they're not gonna speak for long. In the interest of time. You know, and and so, but here's the thing. You can have long conversations later. This is a, this is like, give us a nugget, give us some truth, give us some and be there. So the people can walk up to you. They're not gonna be like, I'm eating, I'm too busy. They're there with five hundred people. You're gonna meet people at the other table, at your table, you're gonna talk with people, you're gonna get cards, you're gonna give out things. You're gonna say, hey, listen, I I I wanna have access, right? The problem is when you go to events, you get a card, if you get a card and there's nobody to support you. You know, you're on your own. How do I reach that? That's why you have an organization. You know, we're there to facilitate. Yeah, so listen.
Some people don't know how to network.
Yeah, look, I mean, ne- networking is simply showing up, right? But showing up. With 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 commitment. It's like dating. You wanna date? You wanna one night stand or you wanna get married? Like if you, if you just network, like I showed up, I went to a bar, I gave a card, I'm waiting for the money coming, it ain't coming in, right? But when you, when you go there and you're persistent and you're saying, listen, um here's why it's good. I'm not saying I'm gonna sell you a piece of junk and I want a million dollars for it. I'm saying I got a solution. Or how can I make a solution? I'm a photographer. Can I get some work? Can I do this? Like, it doesn't mean people are hired right away, but that you're beginning the process. And then sometimes like two years later, like my my son is a sophomore. He's on a football team at his high school. He never played football before. He went as a freshman. He was, I don't know how many minutes. I don't know how many minutes he played in the entire season, right? And, well, he's a sophomore. We went to the first game yesterday. The last eleven, the last one minute eleven seconds, coach put him in because they were winning fifty six to nothing. By the time he's a junior, by the times he's a senior, don't mean he's gonna play. It just means his opportunity gets better and that's how football is, right? You know, and I'm saying that's how business is. You're gonna complain and sit at home and you don't, what else are you gonna do?
Yeah, you know Kobe Bryant says, it's not about the destination, it's about the journey.
And that's the truth of the matter. Cuz that, look, I I say the same thing about my my election and my runs. I say, look, it's not what you do when you win. It's how you run the race. Because you could cheat and steal and win the race. What good is that? Oh, when I win, I'll do all these great things. You cheated and you did all that stuff on the way to getting there. You're already compromised. Do it honestly, do it right. And if you don't win, fine. But but don't think like I can, I could do all this rotten stuff and when I get there, I'm gonna be good. Well, I doubt it. You you already compromised on your way there. You know, and so, yeah, on the journey, you know, keep it pure, keep it the best you can. And so, yeah, you know, come on in, you know, and uh, you know, we'll do good things.
Listen, this was a, uh, listen, I, listen, I'm gonna tell you, I'm gonna be, our interviews are only half an hour. We've been here for hour and a half. So why don't you let everyone know uh first, where can I, you know, participate? How can I get? Reach tickets and everything?
Yeah, so go on the internet, go to W W W dot, right? Asian Business Phila, P H I L A dot com, Asian Business Phila. That's our website and they'll say, right, Golden Eagle, you know, dinner, awards dinner and click on that and you can buy a ticket, two tickets, you know.
Well, then how can I get in contact with David O? Find out more about the honorable uh uh. Former city councilman, uh board chair.
Yeah, my contact information is on that website and other than that, you could Google me. I'm on LinkedIn, Facebook, I'm on TikTok. I'm like all kinds of stuff. And uh like our organization has like free meetings. Where we'll bring in a speaker. We had one. Like some, sometimes we have to limit the audience, right? But it's kind of like first come, first served. But we'll say like we have thirty seats. So we had one with Mo Rushdie, you know? It's free, you know, if you, you know, you have to pay for your own food. You don't have to eat if you don't want to. We had one with Joanna McClinton. One of our clients, Ocean Kingdom. Paid for the whole thing and gave everyone like a gift bag of lobster tail and whatever. Yeah, with with Joanna McClinton, right? Speaker of the Pennsylvania House. Um so so we have these things where, you know, we'll have events. I reached out to someone at the HUD. And ask him to come in and speak to a group that might be like fifty people. It's free, you know, and uh we'll have. We had one with the Senator, uh State Senator Joe Pacozy. We had about two hundred people there. So we'll have different events and so. If you kind of follow what we're doing and let's say you're trying to get into affordable housing, you're looking for procurement. I went out to meet with um, you know, the uh the Secretary of Procurement. It's um, you know, the with the state of Pennsylvania. Uh Secretary Reggie McNeil. And we would love to bring him in sometime. And so if you're trying to sell stuff to our state, that might be a good place to go, learn to process. So so there are so many free ways to learn in the internet or this or that. And 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 we want to do that. So one of the things we're trying to do, we're trying to um. Plan out a summer youth business camp, like a summer camp. All kind of kids, rich, poor, black, white, don't matter. You come in and we'd love to make it free. I I don't know if we can, but I believe we will. Get some sponsors. And we'll have wonderful people like this just explaining how you manage your funds, how you grow your money. How you start a business, how you, you know, do partnerships. And it's really just to get the 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 young people in the mindset. And then they say, oh, that's why I need math. That's why I need chemistry. That's why I wanna study biology. Like you begin to say, oh, yeah, and that's what I could do with art. I could do with the digital, AI, whatever. Where are the, where, how do you, you you, if you don't play, you don't get better, right? Where do I get educated with, you know, and look, my kids just did this program at University Penn, fantastic. And you know what? They paid him too. So he goes to them, they go there to learn. Fantastic program. And they get a stipend, right?
That's amazing, yeah. You know what? That's that's why uh, you know, our our. Our organization, our nonprofit Project Sting is specific to that. The science, technology, engineering, mathematics for you. So whatever you're doing based around it, let us know. I would love that. Yeah, that's right. That's right. I would love that. Alright, well, there you have it. Uh we took up all your time, ladies and gentlemen. This was great. One more time, how can I get in contact with you?
Okay, sure. So uh if you wanna go to AsianBusinessFilla dot com, you could learn about me there. Other than that. Uh you can uh email me at David O Philly. At gmail dot com, David O Philly at gmail dot com.
David O Philly at gmail dot com. But there you have it, ladies and gentlemen. This was an amazing, amazing interview. This is, this is why, like I said, I love the interviews. Cuz I get the chance to talk to the good people, the good people out there and get to know them a little more. I know you guys are asking, well, where is the honorable David O? Well, we had him here today and he kind of gave his story on what he's doing right now, his current situation and how he's. Continue to help the community. So I don't want you guys to go anywhere. I want you to tune in next week with. Some amazing interviews, some stories, and of course, some dynamic news what's happening in Philadelphia.